This, uh, this meeting is called to order. Invocation, pledge of allegiance led by Mayor Pro Tem Dale Clark.
Our heavenly Father, rest us counsel tonight as we gather to discuss the business of the city. Give us wisdom and insight as we deliberate so that the decisions we make will be of the best interest of all our citizens. We ask that you bless our troops abroad and at home as they keep us safe as we seek to protect the rights of freedom for us in this country and for others around the world. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. And City Manager Tom Muir will now make the announcements and events.
Thank you, Mayor. As some of you may have seen about ten days ago on Channel Eight, we'd have new state-of-the-art playground equipment called EVOs, which has been installed at Halton Road Park and Broadway Park. It's not quite open to the public yet. We're gonna put in the finishing touches like put in the five R, which is like the mulch-like material that goes at the base of it, but that should be open by, uh, by the end of the week, by the weekend for the kids to play on, assuming it's, uh, not freezing, or I don't know what the forecast is for the weekend, but hopefully they'll be able to play on it. Uh, the Halton City Rec Center will host a class open house Monday through Saturday, February fourth through the ninth. These classes are free and will be conducted at the rec center. A listing of classes and time schedules are listed on the city's website, haltoncitytx.com. This, uh, this would allow those that maybe wanting to take a look at a class, maybe see if they like it or not before they enroll in it, they can take a crack at it. The Halton City Chess Club will meet at four P M. this Friday at the library. Everyone is welcome. Tax preparation assistance provided by volunteers from the American Association of Retired Persons begins next week. Help will be available at the senior center from noon to four each Monday. For an appointment at the senior center, call eight one seven eight three four eight zero two one. Assistance will be available Thursdays at the library from noon until four, beginning February seventh. For those days, call the library by dialing two 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 seven seven eight six. This service is free and will continue through, um, April fifteenth. Uh, filing for the Halton City General Election begins February ninth. Uh, the election is slated for Saturday, May tenth, for council places three, four, five, and six. Details, qualifications, forms are available at the, in the city secretary's office, um, located here in City Hall. Later in tonight's agenda, the council will be considering calling an election, uh, calling the election to be a joint election held with Tarrant County. Adult softball registration is now taking place at the Halton City Rec Center. Early bird, uh, registration fee is two hundred and seventy-five dollars per team through February ninth. After the ninth, the fee will be three hundred dollars per team. Games will be played at North Park and Little Fossil Park for an eight-game season. The Halton, the annual Halton Stampede will take place Saturday, February ninth. The starting line is the Halton City Rec Center. For information or to register early for the one-mile fun run or walk or the five K event, call the Halton City Rec Center at eight one seven eight three one six four six four. And, uh, information is also available on the city's website. The library will be hosting a Valentine's Day party for children from two to three on Saturday, February ninth. And also on the ninth, uh, actually on the weekend of the ninth and tenth, there, uh, be celebrating the Chinese New Year at the Vietnam Plaza located on East Belknap near Beach Street. Hours are ten A M. to eight P M. both days. Celebration will feature food, music, and dancing. There is no admission charge. With that, that completes the announcements I've got. I'll take any comments or questions regarding that.
Any questions about the events or announcements? Thank you, Mr. Muir. Appreciate it. First up for, uh, agenda item one is the monthly financial report for December oh seven. And, uh, our finance director, Joel Welch, will bring that to us. Joel?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Am I coming through on this? Not really? Okay, well, my voice. My voice, well, it, yeah, I'm getting a little packet. Or I could just take it off and hold it too, but it'll work. I just, I'm afraid one time I'll lean and bite the thing or something. Uh, anyway, it's, it's been a while since I've stood before the council bringing you a, a financial report, uh, I am bringing for the first fiscal quarter, October, November, December of two thousand and seven, which is the first three months of the fiscal year. It is a, a good time to come and talk with the council about the fiscal, fiscal year thus far, because usually after about three months, we're able to, to at least begin to discuss trends and, uh, activities and the implications of these activities over the course of a fiscal year. I've, as is customary, made, uh, some assumptions over, for the, the balance of the year, and these are the first, first effort in that general direction. And as such, they will be subject to... They will be subject to, uh, change month by month as we go through the, the year, and I will, of course, each month keep you apprised of, of the factors causing these changes. I'll begin first, uh, as is customary, talking about, uh, revenues, and, uh, I think they just fixed it. But, uh, in terms of revenues, uh, beginning, of course, with property taxes, a item of particular interest at any given, uh, time. I am, I have been a little bit concerned about the pace of property tax collections in the city through the first, uh, three months of the fiscal year. And I did include a reference to that fact in the report. Uh, our, uh, collections are normally in the realm of, uh, upwards of forty percent by the end of December, and as such, we were floating around in the twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight percent mark, which is not, which is not normal. It's not normal, and it's usually indicative of perhaps some weakness in the local economy. So that, that gives us something that bears watching, uh, over the next few months. I will say, it's not written in the report, but we did some research after we completed the monthly report, and we have found that collections during the month are, are strong, the month of January are strong, and that it is, uh, helping close some of the gap, but even by the end of the month of January, we expect to still be behind historical norms. And we're gonna be watching this very carefully as we progress across the course of the year. I do believe that we will reach the customary, uh, collection percentage of ninety-eight and a half to ninety-nine percent of the levy. I just don't know how long it's gonna take. And where that comes into play for us is that it's important in our, uh, general fund, in particular, and in our debt service fund, to have the tax collections come in early in the year so that we can invest the funds and generate interest earnings, which also help with financing, uh, city services over the course of the year. So this is important, and it is gonna bear a great deal of attention over the next few months, and I will keep you apprised. Sales tax collections thus far this fiscal year are about ten percent ahead of the same pa, uh, pace last year. That is a, a, a real positive for us. It indicates, at least at this point, when I look at our collections and I look at collections around the, the rest of Tarrant County through the first three months of the fiscal year, that at least for now, the local economy is, it still has some support beneath it. That, uh, while there may be areas of weakness in other parts of the country, uh, north-central Texas seems to be holding its own pretty well. And so that is, that is a, a positive thing for us. I would, uh, mention from a budgetary perspective, when it comes to sales tax collections, our projections for the end of last fiscal year, which drove in great part our budget expectations for this fiscal year. We had anticipated somewhat better collections than actually materialized by the end of the year. And so while we're ten percent ahead of the pace of last year, we're on a pace to exceed the budget amount projected for this year by about one percent. So it's still pretty tight, but at least at this point through the first fiscal, uh, quarter, we're holding together pretty well. The, uh, the payments that have come in each month have, have exceeded last, last fiscal year. It's not been an uneven thing where you're, you're up greatly one month and then down the next month. It's been a pretty constant situation. This is a, a, a positive trend, at least now, for the general fund, for the street reconstruction fund, for the economic development corporation, uh, and it's, it's gonna be helpful for the crime district. As far as, uh, uh, the, the funds themselves and the general fund, we are, uh, through the fist, first fiscal quarter, we're seeing some unevenness in the collections. Our franchise collections aren't quite where we'd expect them to be at this point, but, uh, at least for the first quarter, I, I don't, don't detect anything that, that gives me any great alarm for the year. Permits and inspections are in good shape. It's running ahead of expectations. Municipal court collections are running ahead of expectations. Uh, we don't budget municipal court revenues and then ask the court to collect them. Our municipal court projections are deliberately conservative. We, we don't, do not look at, uh, municipal court as a, as a budget balancer. That would be, would be the equivalent of selling justice. We don't do that. So, uh, the fact that it's running ahead of our conservative expectations is a good thing. It is a good thing, and volume in the court and citation volume is, is still very positive, so that is very helpful to the general fund. Our charges for services are, are pretty much in line. I've been a little bit surprised in that, uh, a lot of our fuel charges have not been greater than I expected them to be. So thereby, that means that our, uh, even though the price of fuel has increased during the first quarter of the year, we have not seen, uh, the consumption to be of such a level to cause alarm. So there's been some due care practice by the departments in terms of their fuel usage. So, and that does affect the general fund in that the general fund buys all the fuel and then sells to the other department, other funds. So that's, that's something to be considered as well. On the expenditure side in the general fund, uh, the, the department heads are being their usual careful stewards during the winter. They, they are, they are characteristically careful through the, uh, the wintertime and through the first quarter, well into the second quarter. So we usually are in a positive position as far as expenditures go, and, and that is certainly the case with the general fund this time. Uh, as far as how we will do in overall performance in the general fund, we did plan a three hundred thousand drawdown of the fund balance in the adopted budget. Uh, I'm still projecting that, uh, at this point, that we will probably be at that situation at worst. I think that it's a possibility that we could be somewhat better than that, so that I think that, uh, overall in the general fund, things are pretty well under control, at least through this, uh, first quarter, and I won't be back in three months. I'll be back next month to talk about this again, so I'll be definitely keeping you in the loop on what's going on with this. I am still troubled by the water and sewer fund. We did the rate increases that, uh, that you approved in September. We, uh, implemented the four-point plan that we had, uh, asked you to, to bear with us on, you know, when you adopted the new rates. It was in faith that we would do this four-point plan. Well, three of the four points. The fourth point is, is something that's a few months off in consideration, but we have done the, the things that we promised you that we would do. The rate increases, in spite of the, the apparent ambitiousness of them, have done nothing more than to keep revenues roughly equivalent to last year's revenues. I didn't have a full three-year, a full three months of activity of how much water we had bought. I, I, I watched very carefully what we buy from Fort Worth Water. I only had two months of purchase, uh, activity. The bill for the, uh, Fort Worth Water will come in this week for the December timeframe, but through the end of November, our purchases of water was ten and a half percent below expectations, and it, uh, virtually offset the effect of, of the rate increases. I am somewhat mystified by, uh, at least not having some return to normalcy in water sales. And by normalcy, I don't mean the, the activities of our dry couple of years, but what we were anticipating to sell based upon a, a rolling five-year average, and we, we have not hit that at this point. And I was really surprised because I was studying our rainfall patterns, and by the end of December, normally, we would have, between October and the end of December, we'd have about nine and a quarter inches of rain. Well, during the same period last year, we had about ten and a quarter inches of rain. Well, through the first three months, or this most recent three months, our first fiscal quarter, we had only a little over seven inches of rain. Well, and the normal for January is almost two inches, and when I was composing the report, we'd only had like six hundreds measured at the airport. Well, we're not gonna make the January average unless something really breaks loose in the next few days, and so we're running into another dry pattern, at least through the first four months of this year, and really the last few months of, uh, last, three or four months of last fiscal year were dry. And it gives me reason to believe that we will, we will adopt a more normal pattern as we go forward into the fiscal year. But in the meantime, um, as I did write in the report, I think until we begin to see some real pattern of catching up in terms of our cash flow, in terms of the sales returning to a more normal level, both in commodity and in dollars, that, that we're gonna have to continue to be extremely careful with our spending on the water and sewer fund, and we really need to restrict our spending to necessary items, necessary operational items, uh, continuing to maintain our operations and, and do repairs until our situation begins to improve, and, and I'm inclined to believe it will, but I'm also do, inclined to believe that we probably need to be very, very careful for about three or four months in that particular area. I have received a bit of a, bit of a surprise in that I did not expect in the drainage utility fund for our billings to, uh, to actually increase. Uh, we're not making any more land, and, and we're, you know, we're landlocked, so nobody's gonna give us any more land. And so, you, uh, ordinarily, you would expect that the revenues would not increase, but we had been doing some auditing and some correcting in our database, and that resulted in a slight increase in billings. And so where we had been averaging about a hundred and five thousand dollars a month in billings from the drainage utility, we're now averaging about a hundred and six thousand again. And that's, that's a positive development, but the, the drainage utility is in a, is in a good position. It's in a, it's a, uh, it's through the first quarter. It's come through really cleanly. Uh, but I think this year or next year, we may finally get to a point where we've got all of its startup costs paid off, and it'll be in a, in a more level, you know, better operating position. But at this point in time, uh, the, the, uh, public works people that run the drainage utility have been careful on the expenditure side, and the fund is in, is really in quite good shape, and the prognosis for the utility fund this year is, is a good prognosis. Uh, in the street reconstruction fund, of course, uh, we, uh, are benefiting from, like I said, better-than-expected sales tax collections, plus the, the capital infusions from, uh, bond sales and, uh, from transfers from the other funds, and, and we're progressing nicely in that area. In terms of the crime control and prevention district fund, uh, I am, we're gonna have to be really careful with the CCPD this year. With the sales tax collections tapering a bit based upon our projections at the end of the fiscal year, and, uh, some of the expenditure projections not fitting what we had expected them to be, the, uh, ending balance and the CCPD dipped into negative territory at the end of the fiscal year, we had not anticipated we would begin the year with a negative beginning balance. So we're gonna have to be very cognizant of that fact, and we're gonna have to be careful with, uh, watching the spending in the, uh, crime district over the course of the year, and, and, uh, it's not an unmanageable situation. As, as you all knew, this was going to be the year that we would dip temporarily into a negative, uh, cash and investments balance. We, you know, we've been expecting this for about three years, and that after this year, it would come back around. It will still do that, but we're just gonna have to make sure that we maximize our opportunity and don't use any of next year's benefit this year. So, and, and I think we can do that in, in the balance of this fiscal year. The economic development, uh, corporation, uh, it starts slowly each fiscal year. There's no big surprise with that. Uh, the spending is usually modest in the beginning part of the year. It's below my projections, but my projections for the first quarter are usually high anyway when it comes to the E D C. I know they're a slow starter. Revenues are fine, and, uh, so the, the, the corporation is in, is still strategically positioned to do what it needs to do to, uh, to enhance economic activity in the, in the city. Uh, as far as, uh... As far as the investment report goes, I'm going to sidestep for just a second. I wanna talk about something that's going on, or a couple of things that are going on in the market right now. One of them, as you may have, uh, been reading or watching or hearing through the media, uh, some of these, uh, companies that insure municipal bonds, uh, have run into some hard times. They made some ill-advised decisions, at least in the opinion of, of their core customers. We're their core customers. These companies insure our bonds. We have bonds that are insured by one of these companies that made the news last week. If you've heard the name Ambac. Ambac suffered a large loss in their, uh, uh, financial performance in the last quarter, and their credit rating has come under question. And all of these firms must maintain a triple-A bond rating for their insurance to really have any, any meaning or validity going forward. And I wanna emphasize going forward because we do have bonds that are insured by Ambac. The bonds and the contracts that are already in place are taken care of. There's no, there is no danger to the holders of those bonds. They're still insured. They still have a good investment. And of course, we're still making our payments, so they're, they're gonna get paid under any circumstance, at least, you know, for the foreseeable future, they're gonna get paid. But what it means when these insurance firms run into problems is there are implications for the future. If we want to sell a bond issue, we can try to sell bonds with our A bond rating. A is an investment grade. It's a good grade. If you're a corporation, A's a good grade. There's a lot of major corporations that wish they had A. But if you sell at A, the interest rate on your debt might be four and a half percent. If you can sell it as a triple-A, your interest rate might be four, three ninety-five, three eighty. There might be a big difference, and that much difference in the interest rate on a ten million dollar bond issue is a lot of dollars in interest over twenty years. Well, what happens when these companies who do this insurance kinda get in trouble? They kinda have to move to the sidelines for a little while while they get their business straight. Then there were six of these companies. Right now in Texas, there's only two companies that have that stable triple-A rating. Well, everybody who wants insurance is having to go to the same two companies. The price of insurance just went through the roof. What used to cost about a third of an interest rate point now costs you a full interest rate point. So it has become expensive to have bond insurance now. Now, does, how does that affect us going forward? If we need to do that, we're gonna have to look at how we issue our debt and how much and what term in light of whether we wanna try to sell under our own A rating or try to buy insurance for a triple-A or go bank-qualified. An item that was talked about, uh, that was, that's on the consent agenda, that refunding issue. See, we're going around this problem because we're going bank-qualified. We don't need insurance for this. The bank's gonna buy it directly. So that's not a problem for us if we, if we can go that route. But if we were have to buy, were to have to buy insurance, it would cost us a lot more to get it. And, uh, and it would be a factor in future debt issuances for, for the, the, the number of projects that we have on our, uh, table that we wanna consider for now. The other factor that needs to be talked about tonight for, so that y'all can kinda understand, uh, what's gonna be coming in the next few months, has been the activity of the Federal Open Market Committee, the one they call the Fed, you know, or the Board of Governors. And the Fed has been cutting interest rates, that they, the, the overnight interest rate, the short-term interest rate, they've been cutting it rapidly. As you know, they made an emergency cut the day after Martin Luther King Day. They're meeting again this week, and the markets are virtually a hundred percent certain there will be a cut. The only question is how much they intend to cut it again, whether it'll be a quarter, a half, there's even some betting on, uh, another three-quarters. So what that's going to do is when those get, those rates get cut, it has an effect through the entire... through the entire market, the cost of everything that earns interest goes down, or the opportunity for us to earn yield goes down. Last summer, I was telling you, we had securities mature, and I go back out to the market and I buy at five percent. Well, I have securities mature now, I'm going back out to the market, and I'm hoping, really, really hoping to get three and a quarter. Very shortly, I'll be getting three. Very shortly, if they cut the rate again, I will probably see the high twos again. As y'all may recall, when I came on board four years ago, can you imagine, it's been four years, it's been a fast four years. But can you imagine, four years ago, we were doing these types of two and a half percent instruments, and we were glad to get them. And then, it kept moving up. And of course, during those days, and Mr. Hutchison asked me about this nearly every month, I was chasing our benchmark target. It was constantly moving up, and I was behind it, trying to catch up with it. And, you know, I kind of looked like a goat while I was doing that, but now, that benchmark rate is going down quickly. And as it's going down, I have a bunch of investments that we bought at five percent. So, while my rate of earning is going down more slowly, my benchmark's moving down quickly, and, like I said, three years ago, I looked like a goat, I now look like a genius, and the truth of the matter is, I'm neither one. We are just, we just go as the market goes, we just don't ever hit as low as they do or as high as they do. We stay within that, that range of solid, predictable earnings while we protect the, uh, the citizens' money, because after all, we are investing the citizens' money. And, uh, as such, I'm going to just turn back here quickly and get the exact amounts, but, uh, our investment portfolio did go down a little bit, which is not something that I expect to tell you after the first fiscal quarter of the year, because normally, our total portfolio is increasing, but I, again, I blame that on the slower-than-expected property taxes. But, uh, our average rate of, uh, return on our portfolio, the weighted average yield is four point seven one percent. Our, uh, benchmark is three point two nine percent. Like I said, we look, we look pretty smart, when really, we're just, we're just reliable. That's, that's all we really want to be. Um, but the, uh, you know, and, and we're going to be going for a while, we're going to be able to stay up for a little while, because we have a lot of investments in that five percent range, but as they come up, as our callables come up, they're probably going to get called. But our, our bullets, the ones that go all the way to maturity, we're going to be able to earn some interest off of them all the way through. Uh, in terms of some of the statistical information we provide to you in the back, I haven't gotten rid of the, uh, the market impact of recycling yet, I will get rid of that graph shortly, it will be going away. And I'd already briefly touched upon the, uh, activity of the municipal court, and how the activity's been relatively constant over the past year and continues to be as such. Uh, one of the things that, just one of those good news, bad news things that I just kept looking at and, and didn't know really what to make of it, uh, was the, uh, employment report, uh, through November two thousand and seven. Uh, it's probably been a while since anybody's seen a three point two percent unemployment rate like we're reporting in Holton City now. But in the midst of that three point two percent unemployment rate, I had also noticed that we'd lost about a thousand jobs in the last, in the last year. Why I say that, no, I'm sorry, we'd lost about five hundred jobs in the last year, but about a thousand people had left our workforce. So, our unemployment rate is down, the number of people looking is, is as low as I've seen since we started doing this measure, but the number of people in our workforce has gone down. And, and this bears watching, this bears watching, and, and, and now that we're back to seeing you every month, we'll, I'll, I'll continue to report on it. Uh, and I, we're going to do some more research on that and try to determine implications of this in the future. But, uh, otherwise, that concludes my, my comments, and I'm hopefully ready for any questions you have.
Thank you, Joel. Um, one thing, uh, with, that we might do, and I don't know if you've considered this or talked to anybody, we might just ask the citizens, uh, those of you who are here and listening on, uh, TV, just, uh, who, who would they call to say why we're not using water? I mean, are we just not watering, or are we drinking less, or, uh, having, is, is it tasting bad somewhere? I haven't heard anything like that, but, uh...
Actually, Fort Worth had the best rated water in the United States.
Yeah, really? Yeah, I mean, I'd run it right out of the tap, but I, I don't, I don't, uh, I don't do a lot of watering in the winter, but, you know, I, I can't imagine why somebody had stopped doing it if it had, had been, and it had been pretty dry.
I wouldn't think your laundry would go down, or your, I mean...
Let's hope not.
Yeah?
That's, that's my comments, I wanted to talk a little bit about it if I could, is just, I, I've noticed in, in looking at this water department fund, that we've never differentiated between, uh, commercial accounts and residential accounts. And some of that may be commercial accounts changing the practices of how they manufacture their processes. And that would be nice to know, that if it was a drop in commercial usage or residential usage. Uh, I think that there's a natural tendency in residential accounts possibly to use less water, especially if people become, uh, start zero escaping in their lawn or doing things like that. Uh, now, you could argue that that'd be offset by other people moving in that are not doing it, and, and, but, but without the differentiation between commercial and residential, it's hard to say whether or not it's a commercial pro, uh, issue or a residential issue. Is there a possibility or a way that we could present the numbers in terms of commercial and residential accounts?
We have that data. We do have that data. It's just as, reporting it is in a financial report, we usually just consolidate it, but we do have that data, and we will look into that.
Yeah, that might be good to bring to the council and to the public too, on what, how, what, what that is. That'll give us a little bit more of a handle, because we're just shooting it, we're, we're shooting a shotgun right now at everything in front of us, a hundred and eighty degrees, where that will narrow it down a little bit.
Mr. Hutchison.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, uh, Mr. Welch, uh, and you're exactly right, I always ask questions about chasing the benchmarks, so I'm going to ask it again. Uh, is this going to affect our drawdown? Uh, I mean, we talked about these in our budget workshop during the summer, we anticipated something like this coming, uh, but what has taken me by surprise in reading this is the effect on our drawdown for our debt fund service, and I'm, I'm a little concerned about that. Can you explain for the public how that will affect our debt fund service, our, our debt fund payback, if you will?
In the debt service fund, fortunately, we don't budget a lot of interest income, we don't expect a lot of interest income in that fund, but we do budget a small amount. And, and what I'm saying is true, in particular, for the, the debt service fund, is also true to a different, to varying degrees of, uh, of truth as far as the other funds as well. But the, uh, the fact of the matter is, we use interest income in both the general fund and in the debt service fund to offset property taxes. If you don't have interest income, you have to get that money from somewhere else, and you either get it through increased fees, or as the last result, an increased property tax. And so, that what's, that's what makes interest income so important in both of those funds, is, is the, the effect that it can have on lowering the pressure on, on your property tax rate. If you do not get those expected interest incomes over the course of the year, then you either have to reduce expenditures, or you have to make it up from somewhere, and of course, in, in a, once a fiscal year begins, you can't make it up from somewhere else. So, you wind up having to just adjust to, to make ends meet in a debt service fund if the lack of interest income causes you to hit zero, below zero in your cash and investments in the debt service fund, the general fund has to step up and make it good. The general fund is the guarantor of the ultimate health of the debt service fund. So, if, if it turns out that revenues do not meet expectations such that, uh, the, uh, the outlays used up all of the revenues plus the beginning balance than the general fund.
Okay, which leads to my next point, and that's, uh, that you, you said a while ago that if we have, um, uh, we demonstrate through a, a slower rate of collection for the property taxes, a weak, somewhat of a weak economy, or weak spots in the economy, and yet, we demonstrate a strength through a collection of sales taxes in some parts of the economy. Can you explain the dichotomy?
Uh, there's, there's many factors that go into that, because, in fact, the, uh, while business can be, uh, quite healthy, and they choose to pay their taxes when they choose to pay their taxes. They do that on the basis of, of what's best for them from a business sense, and so, their, their relative health in, um, in sales tax may not translate to early payment of property taxes. They may be late anyway, some may be, uh, early anyway. The time of their fiscal year has a lot to do with it. Some, some businesses are on a calendar year for their fiscal year, some businesses have an April first fiscal year, and it just, it depends, there's a lot of factors on the business side. On the personal side, people could be making some spending decisions. And as such, some of those spending decisions could have been, I'm going to do more Christmas and pay my property taxes at the end of January. And that is, that is a conceivable, uh, possibility.
Well, that was, that was my thoughts, I thought, well, you know, people are just having trouble paying off their, their debts from Christmas. Uh, I, I guess the main point that I wanted to make was, the, the, we are obligated to pay our debts, uh, uh, as far as the bonds are concerned. We, we are obligated, no, no matter what rate, and whether the interest rates drop or not, we're still obligated to pay those debts. So, it becomes a matter, it comes a point, uh, where we have to draw a line in the sand and say, okay, we can't spend as much, we can't go out and issue as many bonds after this point in time, and, and subsequently, uh, so that we could go, uh, continue to pay the debt that we need to pay on the bonds that have already been issued, uh, and, and at some particular point in time, we've got to stop, uh, until we can collect more property taxes and maybe more sales taxes in order to, to issue more bonds, if you will, for debt, to do things, the services that this, the city needs. And, and that's my point, you, you said there's a decision between either spending less or, or, uh, issuing more debt, uh, and then spending more with a, a, an impact on the future. And I see an impact on the future as putting a bigger pressure on the budgets for the future to draw down on the debt. And so, to me, it, it becomes a, a point where we have to draw a line in the sand and say, uh, we can't spend as much anymore.
Yes, sir, uh, what you're saying is quite true. This is, uh, why we spend so much time in the budget process on the, the multi-year planning, and on, uh, the models that we have developed for our operating funds and our debt service funds, is so that we use them to, to do the equation you're talking about that says, this is the point that's, that's appropriate, this is the point that does not bind future councils, and this is the point we go to and no farther. And each year, we have to make that determination, and we have to counterbalance the demands against what we call the capacity. And somewhere along the way, some demands get deferred, because there just is not the capacity to meet all of our demands at one time. And that is, that is a deliberation process that the staff has to go through each time we go to contemplate a, a debt issuance, so that we can come back to, to the council and show the deliberations, and show the choices, and allow the council to, to make changes in that recommendation as, as they see fit, with the council armed with the knowledge that they have a capacity, they have a cap, that they're not willing to go over. And so, it's, it, it, it's a very fluid process, but it, but it works very well.
Any other questions for Joel on this financial report?
If not, we'll, uh, entertain a motion to accept the report. Or not. Now, Mr. Hutchison.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Welch, for a detailed report. I know it's been three or four months now since you've made one, so that was pretty extensive, and, uh, we needed to hear that, and I'm glad that you're going back to a monthly basis so that we can, uh, we can keep, be kept abreast. Uh, some of this takes me by surprise, I admit that, but, uh, some of it, I think we anticipated during the budget workshops, but, um, I appreciate the monthly reports even more. So, with that, I make a motion that we accept the financial, um, financial month, the financial report as reported.
Mr. Holcomb.
It's for a second.
It's been moved and seconded, we accept the financial report as given, uh, any further discussion? Please register your vote. And that is unanimous. Thank you, Joel. Next on the agenda is the capital improvement status report, uh, Mr. Fain.
Sir.
We're taking small wagers here on whether you can out-talk, uh, Mr. Welch.
I can tell you to bet on.
Okay. Go right ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. Members of the council, I'll make this very brief, uh, capital improvement project status report for the month of January of OA. We do this every other month, in the odd months, just to let you know that, because there's not always a, a whole lot of updates. But we'll again, would, begin with some street improvements that the city has performed over the last several months, and one of the big ones was the street overlay program.
Could, could we fix the focus on the screen a little bit? It looks a little bit out of focus there, I think.
I thought it was me, too.
Thank you, Dave.
We'll do that at the end of the presentation, by the way. And, street overlay program, the, uh, the contract to Reynolds Asphalt was the amount of a little over eight hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, and as you can see there in your printout, all the streets that the, the city did overlay, this has been a very aggressive program the city has performed over the last several years, and hopefully will continue to do this program. The only thing that remains in this particular contract is to stripe Midway Road from Carson to Menace. The next street project is the reconstruction of Wood Lane, Woods Lane. We finally have, uh, the contractor's finally turned some dirt down there, so we're moving forward. That field work began January the seventh, and we hope to complete this particular street project in July of this year. And this is also our annual CDBG project of last year, actually. This year's CDBG project is the next one on your list, is the reconstruction of Dana Drive from Denton Highway to Beverly. We have this, uh, the council did award an engineering services contract in September this, last year to Tignan Perkins in the amount of one hundred and forty-three thousand dollars to do the engineering services on this particular project. The next street project is the reconstruction of Beverly from Webster to Vicki. This drug, project has also begun, it began a couple of weeks ago, by turning some dirt, and we anticipate this project to be completed in August of this year. The next project, the council did award at the last council meeting, an engineering services contract to Tignan Perkins to, uh, design the reconstruction of Gene Lane from Broadway to Stanley Keller. It's a great project, outstanding project, I'm sure most of us are very excited about this, and we will actually put sidewalks, it'll be, be a nice stretch of road to, to have some sidewalks on in our community. Yes, sir.
Are the sidewalks going on both sides, or just one side?
We hope to have them on both sides.
Is, and one other question, are we going to widen that road, honey? That's an awful narrow road.
That's been asked. You know, we could look at that, maybe just put sidewalks on one side, but the right-ofways is, is what it is, it's just, you know, the, it's not much right-ofway, there's probably fifty-foot of right-ofway, so we'd have to look at maybe eliminating sidewalks on one side of the street, or both.
I, I mean, I'm not a engineer, but I, just a driver, but it, it looks awfully narrow.
I wouldn't think we'd want to purchase any right-ofway, because the roads, the, the houses are so close to the road anyway, so that would be a difficult task at best.
There, there is sidewalks on one side of the road.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if it goes all the way through, but I know going up and down and out, I remember seeing sidewalks on the, um, hang on, east side.
East, right.
It's got to be the east side.
East side, right.
It's the east side, so I remember seeing sidewalks on there, so I know there are already some there. Uh, as to whether it goes the whole length of Gene, I'm not sure, but, uh, definitely, sidewalks are, um, with as many, especially with, with schools that we have in that area right there, sidewalks are needed in that.
That's a point we'll take, and we can look at that since we're in the design phase, and, and as a matter of fact, on Woods Lane, we could not put sidewalks on both sides of that street, there was just not enough right-ofway. So, we can, we can take a look at that, try to widen that street.
It'd be better to widen it at the expense of one of the sidewalks, that'd be great.
That's correct. Thanks for your input. On to water sewer projects, as you well know, annually, we try to recondition or repaint, repair our water tanks, and, and this year, up for renewal, if you will, is the Wall Street Overhead Water Tank Storage Project, and the council did in November of last year award an engineering services contract to begin the engineering services on this particular Next is... Next is drainage projects, Little Fossil Creek improvements, as you well know, we're moving forward with that. And hopefully, next the next council meeting, we'll bring a contract to you for your consideration and approval to hire a firm to go out and start purchasing the right-ofway for us, and we will be moving forward, hopefully very quickly, on this particular project. With that, there's not any questions. I'll just go ahead and move on to the library progress report. Here's a schematic of the library. I believe you're looking north, so I guess the main interest actually faces south. Presently, what we've done, of course, as you can see, that the staff has biweekly site visits are more necessary. Bear with me here, these are someone else's notes. And also, what has also happened is, of course, we've installed air conditioning units and the interior utilities, the fire sprinkler system, electrical, and the heating and cooling Here's an aerial view of the work in progress. Here's some site photographs. To your left, of course, it shows the steel supports being constructed. The photograph on the right shows the crews griding the gaps in the hollow core panels prior to pouring the concrete slab. And we'll just run very quickly through some works in progress here. Believe this is your signing of the steel before the last piece of steel was erected. That was a very nice day, I hear. Unfortunately, I couldn't make that that event. That's what I hear. There are some signatures, history in the making, and then erecting the last beam. Okay, current issues is cabling. There's going to be, I believe, Mr. Barnett said this morning, 3500-foot of cable to be strung throughout this building for, of course, computers and TVs and that type of thing, which also would include the phone system. Right now, the staff is looking at a phone system, obviously, for the library, but we're also looking at system-wide. We have some phone issues, especially in some of our facilities in our city. So not only we're looking at a new phone system at the library, but throughout the whole city. Furniture, they're looking at the type of furniture they want. I think they've gotten some bids, if I'm not mistaken, for some furniture. There's some sidewalk issues, as you know, that's probably about a 13-acre site, and we want to develop the remaining properties, and there will be some sidewalks to address, especially on the perimeters of the complex and also throughout the complex itself. And then we've been working with TXU about some lighting, to put street lights and light posts throughout the facility.
Real quick, before you go on, the light posts that we're talking about, they're not going to be the normal light posts, these are going to be some aesthetically pleasing light posts, and that's about, is the best description I can have. It's not just going to be like a regular street light.
Future issues, of course, the grading will be an issue. Once the facility itself is complete, some of this will be done in-house, and then, of course, some of it will be done by the contractor. Landscaping, the Parks Department has begun some preliminary landscaping by already planting some trees on-site. Irrigation system, as an example, staff did put in the irrigation system at the Recreation Center four or five years ago, and we anticipate that staff will do this project also. We have some talented folks on board that can do this task, can save the city some funds there. Of course, the park development, we touched based on just a few minutes ago. And the wayside horns, the silent horns for trains that will pass by, that's an issue that we've been working on to install at the area crosses at Halton and McLean, and we will provide this information to you for your consideration in the future. And then, let's see. Next, scheduled events, continue installing the HVAC units, install the roofing, of course, start the exterior machinery work, which Mr. Mayor said it's already started, start the interior framing and complete the outer building envelope by the end of February. I'm sure most of you've been around construction or even maybe had a house built at one time in your life, but once they get the shell built and the roof on, it's a timely process to get the interior complete. But we're still shooting for July to complete and hopefully move in around mid-September. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Cabano.
Thank you, David. You may or may not be able to answer this, and I just got a quick question. I was thinking, I know we have Wi-Fi set up over at the library right now. Are we planning, do you know if we're planning on bringing that over to the new library? And if so, how far out will it go, since we're planning on this landscaping, this beautiful parks area? Are we planning on just keeping it in the building? Are we planning on expanding it out so the people in the park go outside, enjoy the nice spring day, and still be able to surf the Internet and hook up Halton City information?
It should probably be enhanced. You can, it won't take much to enhance that to where people in the parking lot can, or in the adjacent park would be able to do that.
Are we planning on that or? Okay, great.
Mr. Sutton.
That's way down the list, but yeah, that's going to be addressed.
And following up on Councilman Cabano's question about the Wi-Fi, the water feature, I noticed that it's a little bit too early to start talking about that, but that water feature is going to be a really nice place for that type of thing to happen. And so I just wanted to make sure that whenever that design starts, that that consideration is made.
The water feature is not part of this specific construction project, but it is going to, it.
Right, and that's why I wanted to connect the dots there, to make sure that they get connected, that when we think about that, let's think in terms of whatever we're going to do with the water feature, make sure that our Wi-Fi extends to that that area on the north.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Fain? Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor.
Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, consists of items nine, excuse me, items three through item nine. Just for general information, item seven is a resolution to set a, this is for those at home who don't have an agenda in front of them. Item seven is a resolution to call a joint election for city council for City of Halton City, May 10th. That's pretty, it's that time of year again to call that election, and so we'll do that. That's part of the consent agenda. And then the other thing is item nine, which is a refunding of general obligation and revenue bond, Series 1998. And the council heard in pre-council, some, quite a bit of good news as the other side of the coin that Mr. Welch had given us earlier about the decline, rapid decline in interest rates recently, which impacts how much money the city can earn on that feature. But the other side of that is, if we borrow money, it's great, and we can save money. And we're going to save, I think, a little north of half a million dollars by this action. That's not a net figure, I think.
It's just short, the net is just short of half a million.
Okay, all right.
Over 18 years.
Yeah.
Over 10 years.
Yeah, over 10 years, yeah, yeah, yeah. This will, the bond indebtedness, the timing of it will be exactly the same. These bonds were going to be due in 2018, I believe it was, and the new ones will be also. It's effectively a refinancing, but we'll consider, save a considerable amount of money, about, again, about a half a million of all of our dollars over the next 10 years, and so we're excited about that.
Mr. Mayor, did you mean new one or new ones? It's a new one, isn't it? It's that he's talking about.
You mean the refinancing? Yeah, we're taking two bonds and making one out of it.
I thought you said new ones.
No, no, I'm sorry, I may have, but thank you for bringing that out. Anyway, just wanted the citizens and especially those who didn't have an agenda there at home on TV to know what we were doing and when we passed the consent agenda tonight. With that, I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the consent agenda. Mr. Sutton.
Move to approve the consent agenda for this evening.
And Mr. Cabano.
That's for a second, Mayor.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda consisting of items three through nine. Any further discussion on the dais? Saying none, please register your vote. And that is unanimous. Next, item 10, flooding and erosion issues. Mr. Mayor, take it away.
I'm going to have Mr. Deaut go ahead and start getting ready, and while he's getting ready, I'm going to talk about Skyline, because he's got to pull his program up. Property owners down on Skyline are continuing to still work, even though they're 30 days, it's still, it has, did expire a couple of weeks ago. We have scheduled a time to which the staff is going to be going out there to commence the cleanup. We're giving them a little bit extra time to go ahead and do it, but it's going to be happening in the coming weeks. So not comfortable giving a date. We do have a date specified, but I'm scared if I give a date, then all sorts of dumping is going to go on out there. So we'll be working with the property owners and tell them when it is, but it's going to be happening very soon. And with that, I'm going to defer to Mr. Deaut. Mr. Deaut, if you recall, is the engineer that the council authorizes to retain to deal with the erosion control issues that are up on Big Fossil Creek and at Oxbow. I'd ask Mr. Deaut to come and kind of share what he's found, or what, just some interesting things regarding the creek.
Thank you, Mayor and council and people in the audience as well.
Mr. Deaut, would you mind pulling that mic, just pull it a little closer to you?
A little closer, is that better?
There you go, thank you.
I've got Mike right here. Thank you for the opportunity to come and present. I did want to kind of give you a status report. I don't have anything concrete yet, so to speak. As far as what we're going to recommend, it will be a matter of days before I think we'll zero in on that, but I did think it'd be worthwhile to show you a few pictures, basically of things that we've found that I think might help you understand the situation a little better from an engineering standpoint, and I don't know if that'll be very interesting to you or not, but I think it'll be helpful for you to know, to understand why we recommend what we do at the end. At this point, I'll go ahead and go through the slideshow here, kind of explain a few things about how this creek works in this area, and then explain to you what our status is, and then answer any questions that you might have about this. I'm going to try to turn this a little bit so we can. This is, everybody's seen this picture.
You can unclip it if you want to hold it, you can unclip it.
Do my Tony Bennett impression here. Okay, that'll probably help everybody and allow me to point a little better, too. My firm does a lot of different kinds of work. We do a lot of development work, we do a lot of municipal work, probably 60% or 70% of our work right now is municipal work. And we focus on the area of drainage and erosion control. And I always like to point out that when you have an erosion problem, you need to think of it as an erosion and sedimentation problem. And this is exactly an illustration of that because erosion and sedimentation are both natural processes that creeks use, basically to move sediment along. And there are several things that happen in a creek, based on its slope and the shape of the creek itself, the vegetation that grows there and the soils, sometimes the wildlife and other man-made things that go on, how development happens upstream, sometimes how something happens downstream and works its way upstream. And so as we go through this, I want, I just, I want to point that out because really, this problem here isn't so much an erosion problem as it is an issue with sedimentation. That's what forms an Oxbow, which is the feature that we're dealing with here. All right, I give. There we go. I've brought some perspective aerial photographs. This is looking east, just west of North Beach. That's North Beach running east and west there. And right there is where our problem is that we're working on. Reason I wanted to progress through these, you can understand that there's a floodplain there, and when a creek is flowing shallow, different things happen than when it's flowing full. And most of the time, it's flowing more shallow than it is full. It's only in the big events that you get the full flow. And I want to point out here, just as an example of something that can happen when this North Beach is built here, and I don't consider any of this a problem, it's just an observation that will come in handy later. When North Beach's bridge is built there, it changes the shape and geometry here. There's a little bit of upstream effect, which you really can't see from this photo, but you can definitely see when the sediment gets pushed through the bridge, the floodplain opens back up, the water slows down, and you end up with some deposition right there, which is causing a little bit of erosion over here. That's a microcosm of the bigger problem that we're dealing with further downstream. This moves us a little further downstream. Right here is the problem that we're looking at, and you can see a floodplain here, which has the trail for the park going through it. It also has lots of trees, and on this side, not so many trees. Trees inhibit the flow of water a lot. They slow it down quite a bit. In fact, sometimes we estimate that the water, twice as much water or even more can flow in an area that doesn't have trees as opposed to areas that do have trees. This picture is very similar to the next one I'm going to show. I want to point this out so you can see the school here. The creek flows like this, and in a real heavy flood, it just keeps going straight over the top of the trees and vegetation, everything there. But the low flows creep around like that. Does everybody follow that? What happens here is important in the way the creek works because as water was flowing down here over probably thousands of years, I'll say hundreds, sediment builds up here because the flows aren't fast enough to keep it moving. And so during a heavy flood, it deposits sediment there, but in the lower flows and the normal daily trickle water, it finds a way around, and it's pushing this way up against that bank as it goes through there. And interestingly, just take note of the shape of this channel. It didn't used to be nice and straight and almost landscaped as it is today. Now we'll move in just a little bit closer to the school, and I want to point out something here. If y'all are familiar with this creek, and I have no reason to expect that you are, I'm an engineer that climbs around in creeks all the time, but you can see that what happened when they built the school was they cut this channel nice and wide so that it would contain the 100-year floodplain, so the improvements that they were working on over here wouldn't be flooded. And that's a very common thing to do. It's less common today than it was 20 years ago. But as it makes the bend, you can see that sediment is depositing right there, and you can't really see it well in this photograph, but on the opposite bank, on the outside of the turn where the water is cutting up against there, there's been some erosion, and they've built some improvements there to protect that opposite bank from further Here's another good example of it here. I'll go ahead and point out right here, you can see that it turns right there. I also want to make note of this while I'm on this picture. This path here, this little bridge that's been put in there, is handy to walk across so you don't get your feet wet crossing the creek, but the effect of that is to slow down the water at lower flows where it's just overtopping that bridge. And so you get more sedimentation upstream as a result of that bridge than if it wasn't This is a picture, and some of the council may not be able to see on the right there. I've put the date. This is April 2nd, 1942. The Agricultural Stabilization and Conservation Service took this picture. For what purpose, I don't know, but they took it, and it's handy. This is exactly the location that we're talking about. The Oxbow is formed, and it's, we know it's been there for, at least since 1942, and I suspect for some time before that. But the shape of that has changed over the years, and that's what's interesting in this progression of photos. I'd like you to notice a few things about this. First of all, see all the vegetation down here where the school is now? All of that's been taken out. When you take out all that vegetation, the water surface, when the water's flowing, can flow a lot more efficiently. So right at where the school starts, there is probably a slope in the water surface where the water is rushing down through there. Erosion typically works from downstream to upstream, so it's working its way up, and you can almost, I don't know if my photographs can illustrate it that well. This is almost 20 years later, October 9th, 1964. Texas Highway Department at the time took this picture. And in that, you can see the same thing, the same. And in that, you can see the same thing, the same, uh, heavy tree vegetation that exists there. Yeah, it's, uh, the type of photographs have changed over the years. You have to kinda take, and we've got an infrared one here in a little while. It shows that. But it just shows the shape and the, and it's not real easy to see, uh, from these in the sequence I'm giving them, but that, the creek is moving over time. It's moving north right here, which means it's moving up towards where the houses are. And in this area here, I think that the flow line of the creek has moved as much as a hundred and thirty-five feet in the last sixty-five years. Now, this picture shows it, same thing as a different scale. Again, here is our Oxbow, but notice the vegetation is gone. So, that changes the way it flows at this point in time, which is nineteen eighty-four. So, this is just twenty-three years ago. And still, nothing is, uh, is built there, but the vegetation has changed quite a bit. And that, when, when the vegetation is gone, that takes the pressure off. So, when there's vegetation growing in the inside of that Oxbow, and I'm talking about a lot of trees and things in there, the water will take the path of least resistance, so a lot more water is pushed up against the bank, um, on the north side of the creek. Next picture has a little bit of infrared in it. Uh, I think, I think this is really reflecting, uh, heat and water color. This is nineteen ninety-five, twelve years ago. Uh, subdivision is not built yet, and you can see that the vegetation is re-establishing, okay? So, as that vegetation is re-establishing, there is more pressure on that north bank for erosion. And then the last one is two thousand five, two years ago. You can see the vegetation is pretty well established and all the subdivisions are built. This is essentially as it is today. But I again point out, look how much vegetation is not downstream there. Now, um, we've looked at a bunch of different things with respect to the creek. It's important, um, in my work to try to understand why things are happening because drainage improvements are very expensive. And I've seen a lot of drainage improvements installed over the years that I think were ill-advised, and they ended up washing out. To spend hundreds of thousands of dollars or millions of dollars on a drainage improvement and watch nature take it down, down river for you is frustrating. So, what I've, I've come to in my own practice is trying to understand what the creek is doing and working with it rather than fighting against it. And we usually end up saving quite a bit of expense working with it that way. Downstream of this site is Iron Horse Golf Course. I'm sure y'all are familiar with that. And we're doing work there right now, uh, and we've been working with that golf course for almost ten years. And that was one of the first places that I applied this thinking of working with nature as opposed to against it because they had several people looking at doing millions of dollars of paving and, uh, hardening of the creeks going through that golf course to prevent erosion. And for those of you who've played there or been there before, they had several low-water crossings. And those low-water crossings were creating most of the problems they were worried about. And the idea was if they put those in, it'll slow the flow down and there'll be less erosion. What happened was, they put those in, there was sedimentation upstream, which caused the erosion to happen on the banks. So, we put in bridges and saved them a lot of money in improvements by doing that. And then also, they got the play opened quicker after a rainstorm, so they were real happy about that. So, that's what we go through in our office to try to think about these problems that we're trying to solve. And so, at this point, we've, we've resolved that the best thing to do is to armor the bank, which is kind of the direction we've been heading. And, and let this, uh, thing function as it is, with the exception is, we're gonna put our hand up, we're gonna say, this is as far as you're coming, and you can use the rest of the floodplain to do all the things that a floodplain does. It stores water during a storm a little bit. Uh, it manages the energy, it does a lot of things with the wildlife. There's a very complicated system in how water flows downhill. So, having said all that, we're looking at an option, which I don't know what it is yet for armoring the bank. We've got several that we'll be looking at. And I'll be meeting with somebody on, uh, we're having a workshop on this in my office on Thursday, and we'll review some different options. And the next time I come, I'll be able to, uh, tell you exactly what we're planning on doing for this creek. The, uh, the first picture we looked at is partly an erosion problem, but it's also a geotechnical problem because really, the erosion that's happening is just affecting the soil. And you could see how, in that first picture, how the soil had just slumped down into the creek. And there's a, several different ways that soils fail, that's one of them. The rest of the creek seems to have more of a sheer failure where the creek eats out the toe as it's flowing. And when the big flood comes through, you just have a, a slice of earth fall off into the creek. So, there are really two kinds of failures that we have to work with there. I'm trying to think what I was gonna say that I've left off. I'm gonna point out that the shape that we see here today, if I could go back to the first picture and overlay them, what you would see is that the original photograph had this creek a little further south here, but the, uh, this part of the creek that's here now used to be over here. So, what's happening as a result of the downstream construction of the school, I believe, where the, where the water surface is dropping real quick, you're getting this washing effect through there, is that the, um, hairpin turn that it's making right here is trying to wash out. And I think your public works department has been working at stabilizing some of that area because of some of the erosion that's happening right around those trails. So, we'll keep that in mind as well as we're trying to address this problem upstream, see if we can't do some things that'll minimize that as it moves forward as well. So, I think I've said enough. Does anybody have any questions?
Ms. Reese.
For you.
Okay.
Something I heard you say is, is the bridge that's down in the park altered the water flow at some point or another from, from appearance? How can that hap, I mean, how can that be? Because I didn't think we were allowed to humanly alter water flow, that it's supposed to always go to natural course of wherever it's gonna go.
The only way it altered, it doesn't change the direction of it or anything like that, it just slowed it down. Uh, at, at certain flows, not in the big heavy flows, it's irrelevant. But in the flows that are maybe just a, a foot or two over the top of the road, those kind of rainstorms, uh, the water is flowing a lot slower right there because there is a, is a dam there with some pipes going through it.
Right, cause I mean, beavers also build their own dams.
Yes, they do.
So, we're always having to, I know guys are having to go out and knock them out. But then the other thing is, is, is some of those, some of those trails, I don't know how many of those were put in prior to the homes being built or even after the homes being built. But I've talked to multiple people that had concerns back when that subdivision was built. So, I guess my question to you is, what would, and what would, what would, what would a homeowner, homemaker look at if they're, I mean, don't they get the same pictures? I mean, aren't, I'm, I'm struggling because I don't, I don't know why. It's no offense to that area, because I've told everyone, there's a house over there I still want, but I don't understand why the homes were even built at a potential area of that nature. If, if that, that.
This, this kind of research is not typically done. We do some land development in our office as well, and this isn't, this research isn't typically done on developments like this.
So, what could we do different around the high school? I mean, some of that field's not even utilized, so what could we do, what could we ask the school district to help us with, to help these homeowners?
Well.
For, down the road, I mean.
I wanna, I wanna point out, there, there are so many different factors that affect what happened on that north bank where we're trying to address that. The construction of the subdivision's probably a little bit to do with it. Uh, the way the homes were constructed might've had something to do with it. The fact that vegetation is re-emerging in the park, that had something to do with it. What happened at the school had something to do with it. Development upstream had something to do with it. Uh, all these different things will have an effect, and, and being able to point a finger and say, this is what caused it, is gonna be very hard, uh, to do. What did man do to cause the problem? I don't think I can answer that question.
So, we can't blame just Keller or Watauga all by himself?
No, the, it, it may be hard to, hard to, hard to relate, but for the most part, this watershed is hydrologically undeveloped. There's development upstream, I'm not saying there's not, but it's a huge watershed. There's a ton of water coming through there. And if you remember the spring, when we had all the rains over a long period of time, when clay soils, which is mostly what we have around here, when they get wet, they don't soak up any water anyway. So, even a thousand years ago, the runoff in this creek during those big, huge events probably was a lot more than people think it is now, in my opinion, and not that much different than development. Development does increase flow somewhat, but it's not twice as much or anything like that, I don't think. The, um, the fact is, when, everybody can see this, when we have a big rainy season, it's apparent that there's a lot of water running off even from places that aren't developed yet. And that's why we have a lot of the problems we do, I think, is because we, sometimes we underestimate what that flow is. But there is some effect. There is definitely, I believe, definitely an increase. It's just not twice as much, it may be twenty percent as much or thirty percent as much. Did I answer your question? Yeah.
Is that, is that all of your questions, Kim? Uh, Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, being from Louisiana and on the eastern side of Louisiana, Mississippi River, I've seen a lot of large, large lakes from oxbows. When the river would get large, wide, high, it, it, it would start to cut through the oxbows. And over hundreds and hundreds of years, it would take that as its new path.
Right.
That would probably happen here.
At some point, it might, yeah.
Would it be beneficiary for us to help it along?
This perspective that we're looking at will, will help me address that. We're sort of looking straight down the path of the water from this perspective that we're looking at it from. Um, the answer is, we did look at that. There is a, some consideration is given to it, but it's a much bigger solution than you think, just taking a bulldozer out there and plowing through it. Because first of all, when you do that, you know you're gonna have impacts upstream, like possibly the school had some to do with. You're gonna have impacts upstream and downstream when you do that. The reason it's, I, I don't have it here, but if we took a cross-section and just looked across this, what you'd see is a low-flow point here and another low-flow point there. And if we just cut through that, we'd create a third one. Each one creates an opportunity for erosion. So, when you build those, you have to build them stable. They have to be built so that they're not gonna move. And you have to convince nature to follow your lead. So, what you have to do is you have to change the cross-section, and you have to basically re-grade this whole entire area here so that you have one drainage, drainage way with slopes that are stable, much like what they have down here. And then, you still have the problem with the slope over there that you have to fix somehow. And I'd say, what we thought about was just backfilling it. That is going to require extensive environmental mitigation because that's a governed waterway of the United States. So, the Corps of Engineers will have something to say about that. In addition, when you go back and re-grade that, you're gonna lose all the storage that the creek is using there, the valley storage, and that's gonna be one of the Corps' issues, I'm sure. Hydrologically, it's one of mine as well. So, there are a lot of things. You're gonna wipe out all the trees, start over with that, cut a channel, re-grade the whole area so that it drains to one point. And before you get very far with that, it's a huge project to do that. So, at some point, it might straighten out, but not, not necessarily. The hydraulics of the Mississippi are, they're, it's carrying a lot more sediment. There's a lot of things that are going on. The sediment in this watershed is from the geological formations that are sourcing it. And it's boulders and gravel and that kind of thing. You don't have much of that there. Oxbows do that. Typically, um, they reach a limit, and then when the creek decides it's just easier to go straight through, that's what it does.
It starts eating down. It eats, each high water event will eat more and more, and then it becomes a new channel.
That, that's what'll happen, but it'll do it, uh, because of all the dynamics of soils, vegetation, hydraulics, the kind of rainstorms you get over periods of time affect it, everything does. And trying to figure that out is a very complex puzzle to make sure that you actually fix the problem. And I'm not sure we could do it. We may do something like that and then find out it wasn't ready to do that yet, and it goes and cuts the same.
Exacerbates the problem.
Yeah, and then I have to come back here and explain why that happened in three years, and I don't think that, that would be fun at all. But, um, we have, we have that problem there. Right now, I feel like if I can personify the creek a little bit, it's told us what it thinks the best solution is, and we can agree with that and armor that bank. And, and we're not changing anything that's potentially gonna have any effect downstream or upstream of our location. So, it keeps everything sort of status quo, it just reinforces what Mother Nature's already built there.
Thanks, sir.
Keep in mind that, that Oxbow's been there for many years. It's probably gonna be there for many, many more. You can, we can tell nature to cut the channel and try to make it, make it that problem, but let's say we do that. Let's just say we're not gonna be causing another erosion problem further upstream, just as he explained. Um, these, these were things that, that he and I talked about when we've been discussing this. There, there's no easy solution to this. There's all sorts of what-ifs, uh, an endless list of what-ifs, if we did this or if we did that, so.
I still need to, to explain our status and where we are in the project, so before.
Well, he's got one more question here.
Go ahead. Uh, Mr. Sutton.
Well, that's about what I was gonna center on, was question two in his last slide. So, Rich, why don't you go ahead and proceed, and if you don't answer my question, I'll go ahead and speak up.
All right, we, uh, we got our, our contract with you all worked out and began work immediately. I have a whole team of people that we're working with on this. I, I use a lot of different people for these things, but I pulled together what I consider our A-team to do this, and they're all anxious to be involved and help as well. Those are my, my bullet points, the things I wanted to explain. First of all, uh, our survey, our, our, our land survey, our topo survey is complete. Uh, we've also been out and, and set flags locating where the, the Corps, Army Corps of Engineers has jurisdictional waters there, so we have flagged that and located it by field survey. Our geotechnical engineer will be out either Friday or Monday for probably one or two days, so we'll have our geotechnical work in the field done, and they are gonna turn it around right away for us. So, hopefully, I'll have their recommendations by mid to late next week. We've been out there also with the Corps of Engineers, and I point this out because it's not easy to get their time. They've been out here twice with me, and it's been very easy to get their attention. They're very interested in helping us move forward. And what we did, I've done a lot of this kind of work, and I know kinda what some of their buttons are. Our environmental consultant was out there as well. And what we try to do is come to an understanding of, of, uh, what they felt like we could do that wouldn't hinder the process too much. There are certain things, like if we filled in that creek and cut through the oxbow, everybody's gonna stop, and we're gonna spend two years working through an environmental process, probably. So, we've talked with them about how we can, how we can move forward with what we think is, is the best solution, which is some sort of armament of the, of the wall. And come to an understanding of how much ground can we take into the creek? We're trying to re-establish, and the nineteen forty-two photograph is very helpful here because we can say, this is where it used to be. And they're sort of agreeing with that, I think. I don't wanna put words in their mouth, and we are, um, um, being watched here, so I wanna make sure that I don't misrepresent anything they've said. But they have met with us on the site, and, and they've been working with us to, uh, help us find a solution that they, uh, believe would be the best quickly. Normally, the way the process works, we go through and do a lot of work, and we submit something to them. And then they come back and tell us to go do other things and, and point out things that they would like us to look at and things like that. And we're trying to avert as much of that process as we can, and I believe we're getting cooperation, uh, doing that. Uh, I expect probably within the week, uh, within a week from today, uh, to know the particular type of armament that we'll use. And then, uh, we're gonna work fast and furious to get a, a, a final design completed so that we can, uh, move forward with that. And, um, hopefully, have something, if you all decide that you agree with the solution, to move forward with a, um, with a construction contract and get construction started before the spring rains. Bottom line is, from our end, though, we know this is important to y'all, and we, my whole team's tripping over each other trying to get their stuff done. So, normally, there's kind of a sequence of events, and I'm just cramming them all together, and I'm losing friends doing it, but we're having fun. So, that's, that's, uh, kind of our status. Anybody have any other questions?
Mr. Deah, we thank you very much and appreciate you using up, uh, some of your, what we call political capital to get the job done in a, in a, uh, forthright, uh, way, and, and thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much.
Uh, with that, uh, we've been at this. With that, we've been at this for about an hour and a half. Why don't we take a 10-minute break? We'll be making back in here at 8:45.